Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Elizabeth Court of Education. Pursuant to New Jersey statutes and rules adopted by the Board of Education, notice of this meeting was sent to our ledger and cable vision of America of Elizabeth on Friday, May 10, 2019. In addition, this notice posted on the bulletin board club of five quarters broad and pursuant to this act, copy has filed with the court. We want to welcome everyone present here at Donald Stewart Early Childhood Center, school number 51, to our television viewers, May 19, 2019, Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Court of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We also ask that you silence the sound of your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded. We may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capability. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us here for our Board of Education. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth public. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the board. Participants for the public portion may sign up through the start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and the reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general education item. Mr. Kennedy, roll call please.
Barbosa.
Present.
Batlas. Pravalo. Devera. Hernandez. Jacob. Marina Otak. Neron.
Present. Mr. Kennedy, give us one second. We're dialing someone in. The meeting. At this time, may we all rise for the Admiral William F. Hawsey Jr., Health and Public Safety Academy, J.R.O.T.C. Call the guard. Please present your colors.
One, four, one, ten, one. Two. Three. Ready, cut. Forward. Ouch. Call the guard. Ho. Forward. Ouch. Ready, cut. Ouch. Ready, cut. Heavy. Colors. Ready, cut. Present. Colors.
The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Dr. Antonia Puntoja, school number 27 students. Madalina Rajiste, fifth grade student, and Diana Francis, seventh grade student.
Allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Please continue to stand for the Star Spangled Banner, which will be followed by the national anthems of Cuba, Haiti, and Portugal in honor of the Cuban, Haitian, and Portuguese heritage.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars draw the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
The next anthem is the Cuban national anthem, La Payamessa, by Pitucho F. Virgo. Here we go.
[Music] 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 [Music]
[Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music] [Music]
Heavy. Colors. Ready, cut. Forward. Colors. Ready, cut. Ouch. Nice. Cut. Heavy. Ouch. Ready, cut. Forward. Ouch. Call the guard. Ho. Forward. Colors. Cut. Two. Nice. Cut. Call the guard. S. S.
Me all. At this time, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by William F. Holleran, school number 22, fifth grade student.
I would treat people as I wish treated to do that I pledge to. Understanding that the whole community is a special place. Listen and respect each other, someone else's speech by paying close attention and not interrupting. Give a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Fire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating active kindness. Be a lifelong winner by taking every opportunity to learn from others and remember to be the best in the team.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will be showing our core belief video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve at high levels regardless of race, ethnicity, culture, neighborhood, household income, or home language.
All means all. We will narrow the achievement gaps of students by providing a high-quality education to ensure that all of our students are college and career-ready.
We believe teachers make a positive difference in student achievement. Teacher will prepare all students for success in college, career, and our technological global society.
We believe that teachers are central in a child's life. Having an effective teacher is the single most important factor in student success.
We believe that effective leaders demonstrate unwavering commitment to high levels of achievement for all students.
Leaders will amplify and support practices that promote high level of achievement for all students.
We believe that parents and caregivers are both valued partners and active participants in their children's learning. A shared sense of mutual responsibility for learning is the foundation for family involvement to ensure student success.
We are committed to engaging parents and caregivers in their children's education.
We are committed to engaging parents and caregivers in their children's education. We will develop a coordinated strategy that enables parents and caregivers to play an active role in building and sustaining family support for their children's learning and academic success.
We believe that every member of the Elizabeth Public Schools team has responsibility in producing and supporting high levels of achievement for all students.
Every member of the Elizabeth Public Schools team will make a measurable contribution to the success and achievement of all students by ensuring equitable distribution of resources throughout the organization.
How much do we love our teacher?
A lot.
A lot? Can we give a big round of applause? That's a thank you. Can we give our president, our vice president a cool whip?
Ooh, whip!
Oh wow!
And you know what is very important in May? Our earth. And the earth that we live in, right? And we have to love the earth that we live in, right? And what's in our earth? You look around and what do you see?
Stores.
Stores?
A park.
A park?
Trees.
Trees. People?
Houses.
Houses?
Cars.
Cars. Everything makes up the earth that we live in, right? So we have to protect the earth that we live in. And how? One important thing that we do to protect it is we try to keep it clean. We can be whatever we want to be, but you have to remember that we're a team, right? Just like what's the best school? School 16, right? We're in the best school ever, but you have to learn how to work together. And today particularly is a very special day because today is Autism Awareness Day. If you see what I have here? So I'm going to teach you something. There are special children out there, right? And we're not all the same. And sometimes we learn differently. Sometimes we walk differently. Sometimes we sit differently. Sometimes we laugh differently. But guess what? We all need to love each other, okay? Because we love you no matter how tall and how short you are. And every single one of you is very, very special. So just remember, we are all special and we all have to be a team and work together, okay? Good luck, have a good day. And again, thank you to your teachers and you have the best principal and vice principal ever, okay? Here's to School 16, right?
At. We are going to start with our performance for the evening. In honor of the Cuban heritage, Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy student Eliana Maynard will recite White Rose, Cultivo una Rosa Blanca, a poem by Jose Marty in English and in Spanish. Give her a big round of applause.
My name's Eliana Maynard. I have. Walk. For one blows, break the heart by which I live. This one or thorn do I give? For him to I have. Thank you.
Eliana. Next up, in honor of Haitian heritage, Dr. Antonia Pantoja, School Number 27 students will perform the Haitian Percorde Dance, AKIKAO, by Emeline Mitchell.
AKIKAO. For the chanté pour la vie mille. AKIKAO. Pour y en joindre tout à réunir. Nous ajoute nos melodies et on se pointe paradis. Antiment qui fait magie. Si tout le monde tout pays, dans les monts à rivés réunis, tant couillons paraties. Nous ajoute nos power, on engage en musique et en melody. Antiment fait magie. Et ça. AKIKAO. On allait, on allait. AKIKAO. Pour chanté pour la vie mille. AKIKAO. En fait non, en là oh oh. En fait non, en là oh oh. Tout le ensemble, la brûlée. AKIKAO. Sans même power, sans même musique, dans la vie on autant d'immense. Répéter. 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 Alissa, Kéké, Joel, Vivi. On allait, vous nous cachez dans l'espoir. Vous nous cachez la joie. En fait non, en là. Mini chanté. Mini, 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 mini.
Great, great job. Last up, in honor of Haitian heritage, the fifth. What a great job. Great performances from all of our cultures. Colleagues, my students, friends, for our student excellence portion of tonight.
Madam President.
Yes.
Can we take a picture with all the performers?
Yes, they're not going anywhere.
Are they not?
Yep. Got your moustache there on. Thank you.
Got it. Bel bagay. Aïcien ozon. Yes. Tak pas sé. Alright.
We open our Student Excellence Awards portion of the calendar this evening with three seniors who have recently earned exceptional honors or scholars from noted organizations. We would like to celebrate their success with you and ask you to join us in applauding their wonderful accomplishment. Please come forward as I call your names. Brian Nishdevish, 12th grade student of Alexander Hamilton Academy. He's a boy scout. He got Eagle Scout. Brian, come on up. Marina Pereira, 12th grade student of Alexander Hamilton Academy, a Girl Scout. She got her Gold Award. And Zazid Pereira, 12th grade student of Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy, Elizabeth Promise Award. So Brian and Marina couldn't be here, but we have. How are you? Our next student recognition of this evening, the Elizabeth Board of Education would like to present the resolution in honor of the exceptional achievements of a Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy senior, Gianni Raimundo. The goal of Elizabeth Public Schools is college preparedness, career readiness, and on-time graduation for every child. Come on up, Gianni. I'll embarrass you while you're up here. While Elizabeth Public Schools continues enhancing its rigorous curriculum and provides high-quality instruction to prepare students for college and career opportunities, the district also seeks to transform the boys and girls who enter into school, caring, responsible young men and women of high character. Gianni Diaz Raimundo, a senior at Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy, has taken lessons and opportunities she has been afforded, both inside and outside of the classroom, to better herself and the greater community. Gianni has been a longtime member of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, recently earning the Gold Award, the most prestigious recognition bestowed upon a Girl Scout. I think she deserves a round of applause for that. For her Gold Award, coordinated a donation drive to support Raphael Lifehouse, a local charity serving women who are homeless and pregnant, which is right here in Elizabeth. Gianni has also written a children's book about her experience as a child of adoption and has served as a speaker for the National Adoption Day event across Union and Middlesex County. And I'm proud to say that she is the Union County Representative for Adoption here. Gianni, through these outstanding achievements and many others, was recently honored with a President's Volunteer Service Award, an award granted by the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program. The President's Volunteer Service Award recognizes Americans of all ages who have volunteered significant amount of time to serve their community. So let it be resolved that the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby resolve Gianni Diaz Raimundo, not only for her extraordinary commitments to serve both the Elizabeth and greater communities, but also for serving as an inspirational example for all. Congratulations. Good evening, everyone. Our Stars of Excellence Honoree for this evening are the students and team members of Juan Pablo Duarte Jose Julian Marti School Number 28 for their commitment to health and well-being through participation in New Jersey's Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. The Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program provides the opportunity for schoolchildren to try new, healthier foods and increases their fruit and vegetable consumption, ultimately leading to a lifelong dietary habit. As a result of their outstanding dedication to fruit and vegetable activities, education, and consumption, School Number 28 was awarded as the first-place winner of the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program's Very Impressive Produce or VIP Award. Please join me in applauding the efforts of the, of the School Number 28 community for their commitment to a healthier lifestyle. Any representatives of School Number 28 who are here this evening, please come forward to receive this wonderful certificate. Thank you.
Alright, let's give our students another big round of applause again this evening for all their great achievements and for all those fabulous performances. And our School 27 family want to bring them forward as we celebrate Haitian Heritage Month. Come on up. Sac passe. Sac passe. Everybody, sac passe. Alright, let me, let me, I just show everybody what to say. So when we say sac passe, it basically means what's up? And then you respond, napu le. There you go. You got it. So sac passe. Sac passe. Alright, we got everybody on board. Anybody else from the Haitian community that's here, if you can please join us along with the School 27. Come on up, come on up, if you're here. Principal and VP and staff, come on up. Come on up. Join us, please. Thank you again. Wonderful, wonderful performance.
At this time, can we have our student that performed for the Cuban Heritage? Come join us. Anybody else that is Cuban, that wants to join us, Mr. Ojeda, join us. Anybody from our staff, teachers? Anybody that is here celebrating Cuban heritage, please join us up here. Director Marcel. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to call up our School 22 community that did a wonderful performance as well. And anybody that from the Portuguese community that is here with us tonight. We have our 2019 Elizabeth Portugal Day Royal Family that has accompanied us and as well as Elizabeth Portugal Day Committee that is being led by our Madam President, Ms. Maria Almeida. Anyone else that is? Yep, they're making their way. Can we ask for our other students that were performing tonight? Please join us. Take a picture with our performers. Call up the kids. Get our kid performers. She's coming. Our Jefferson student. Last one, I promise. Alright. I would like our VP from School Number 28, thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Petit. Hello, welcome. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna keep on moving with tonight's agenda.
I'm supposed to say sac passe, Petit. You missed it all.
Stop.
You missed it. So when I say sac passe, what do you say? There you go.
There you go. At this time, I would like to share a couple remarks before opening the meeting to public participation. I have designated office hours from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM every Monday night during which Elizabeth families may take an appointment to meet with me and discuss any issues or concerns pertaining to Elizabeth Public Schools. Once again, I would like to share my appreciation for our performers and our community members of Cuban, Haitian, and Portuguese heritage for being here with us this evening. Thank you for honoring and sharing your heritage with us and for helping us showcase the tremendous strength and unique qualities our community possesses through its diversity. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week and National School Nurses Day, I would like to applaud our teachers and nurses for the outstanding work that they do each day to ensure our students are in good health and are receiving the skills and knowledge necessary to succeed after they leave our schools, both educationally and professionally. Finally, with Mother's Day coming up this Sunday, I would like to recognize and thank all mothers here in our school community and the greater Elizabeth community and wonderful mothers who sit beside me on this board that sacrifice so much for this great city and mothers everywhere for the heroic work you do in raising children to become our next generation of leaders. To all you mothers, have a wonderful day on Sunday. I hope you enjoy it in presence of family and loved ones and that the day brings you all the joy that you deserve. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to pass over onto our Madam Superintendent. The tragic events at STEM School Highlands Ranch on Tuesday in Colorado and at UNC Charlotte in North Carolina last week are heartbreaking reminders of the external perils that exist and the significance of our efforts to create safe and secure learning environments. Ensuring the safety of our students and team members and the security of our buildings is a collaborative effort that includes students, team members, local and regional law enforcement agencies, the New Jersey Department of Education, and the Department of Homeland Security. This partnership has resulted in the development and adoption of a crisis plan built upon extensive research, knowledge, and experience that prepares school communities for a full spectrum of emergency situations by outlining specific protocols to follow for each respective emergency event. In order for us to ensure to the best of our ability that our students, team members, and visitors will be in the safest conditions possible during an emergency event, it's imperative that our schools participate in school crisis drills twice monthly as predicated by state regulations. Participating in drills and practicing the protocols for various emergency situations help to provide our learning community the best possible opportunity to respond in a manner that enables people to remain safe should a real emergency event take place. Providing a safe and secure school is our most important priority and our efforts go well beyond all of the 27,000-plus students practicing lockdown and emergency drills on a monthly basis. Elizabeth Public Schools presently employs 167 security guards district-wide, police officers in targeted locations, extensive security monitoring, metal detectors, and camera surveillance systems. All district schools are locked throughout the day and unauthorized visitors are prohibited. The district also provides significant professional development and security strategy throughout the school year. We believe all of these practices are the hallmark of maintaining a safe and secure learning community in which your children can come to school focused on learning, keeping excellence, and realizing their hopes. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. It is very saddening and disheartening that these mass shootings, including those at schools, seem to be appearing in the news more frequently and that creates an air of uncertainty and concern that sets us at our core. The best way we can honor the lives of those who have been injured or lost their lives in these tragedies throughout our country and the world is to work together as a community to keep our children safe. We must recognize the importance of being in this together and acting accordingly so they can grow and reach their full potential. Our children deserve the opportunity to grow with a sole focus of realizing their hopes and dreams and it is our collective responsibility to make that happen. I am confident in those with whom we collaborate to develop our crisis plan, such as former law enforcement officers from the Juvenile Investigation, SWAT, Crisis Negotiations, Investigation, and Accident Investigation Divisions. Collectively, they provide an invaluable amount of experience and knowledge to help us in developing and refining our policies and protocols. In fact, in the past, our other districts have reached out to us for guidance and information about our safety and security practices. I also believe in the men and women here in our schools and administrative offices charged with keeping our students and team members safe. Creating and maintaining safe and caring environments will always be our top priority. With everyone working together, I know we will do that successfully and will give our students an ideal environment to achieve excellence so that we can continue to celebrating their successes like this evening. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to the session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participations shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation shall not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I call upon Ms. Maria Echevaria.
Hello, my name is Maria Echevaria. I happened to see last month's Board of Education meeting and I found it insulting that all of our CPAC members didn't attend. Okay, I, I heard that one of them got the call to come. Okay, and then called the other one, let's go, you know, I'm coming to get you. I found that very insulting. Every time you see a board member, you guys have to see yourselves. You don't catch yourselves on videos. Okay, you gotta see you. You're whispering in another board member's ear and the first time it's, oh, let's call up the councilwoman. Then you see her chasing her down again and it's now let's call up CPAC. Okay, but where was? Okay, but where was, where was I? Okay, where was our president for the CPAC there? Where was our secretary for the CPAC there? It was very political, okay, because everybody is buddies with everybody. Okay, and when you are doing your events, okay, you guys should really see how you conduct yourself. Okay? It's a shame when I'm going to one of your boards, you know, one of you guys or ladies, let's say, and you are kind of trying to walk away from me with my kid there, but you're there for our kids. Okay? So don't act like, oh, you need something for him, okay, but then you're trying to play slick. Okay, that's very insulting. I really think you guys should look into your policies about how you're picking your CPAC. I don't think you guys should be picking our CPAC, by the way. Okay? I think, and I am the CPAC Policy and Programming Officer. So you know what? I think you guys should really look into that because I don't think you guys should be doing it. I don't think districts should have, be picking out the people. Okay, because there are lots of parents that go to our monthly meetings, and two of them are here that I see. Okay? And I'm sure that they can be very proactive into the CPAC. Okay? Our CPAC last year really was a joke. This year, I could say we did a lot compared to last year, but our fair this weekend was a disaster. Besides, DVR S was there. That one I can say, but the rest of it was like, it was like half people there, like hardly nobody was there. You guys, no notifications came out, nobody called anybody and said this was going on, so nobody got the call. I called two parents I know from Elizabeth to ask them, did they get the call? No. Nobody got notices about anything. So I mean, you guys should really look into that, check your policies regarding that because I don't think that our district should be picking out the parents, I think the parents should be picking out the parents. Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Christina Marrera.
Thank you, good evening. I totally agree with everything Maria Echevarria. Um, but I'm back here again to talk about the budget because I didn't quite get a clear understanding of this cut in the after-school program. Now, I mean, I'm not making anything up. If you have the budget in front of you, look at page 12, and item 19160 reads "Total Before After-School Program Instruction: Decrease Due to Change in After-School Program From Three Days to Two Days." Okay? So I am not quite understanding, Madam Superintendent, when you said that some schools have two-day programs, some schools have three-day programs. Um, but what I'm asking about is specifically in this line item where it says that the three-day programs are being cut to two days. That's what I'm asking about, that's what I'm not clear about, why that's happening, if it's happening because again, we should be adding more after-school programs, specifically intervention-type programs. I can tell you from personal experience as a mother with a child who is in very much need of intervention services how difficult it is to get intervention in this district. We want our children to achieve, and I see videos and watch everybody talk about how much we want our children to be prepared, but yet we have to fight the district every time we want our children to get intervention. The only time they can get it is if they're actually failing, which is, doesn't make any sense. I'm not gonna wait for my child to be failing to be able to get them the services that they require. Um, so again, if you could just clarify to me specifically, uh, what those, what that exactly means, that the program's being cut? And again, I was going through the individual schools. Um, school one is gonna be losing, um, $719,000. School two's gonna be losing $260,000. Um, school nine, $316,000. School 23 is gonna be losing $789,000 from their individual school budgets. Uh, again, these are supposed to be based on the total number of disadvantaged, disabled, and English-language learners. All of these schools have very high disadvantaged and English-language learners and disabled students. So I'm not quite understanding why those schools are losing large amounts of money when they have high percentages of those groups and why a school like the one my children attend are getting money and they have substantially less of these groups of children. One last thing before my time runs out. School five has bars on their windows. Those children feel like they're in jail, and I know this, and I know Commissioner Hernandez knows this, uh, because those children have expressed that when they walk into that school, they feel like they're in a jail. So I would ask that whoever's on the Plants and Properties Committee take a look at going about removing the bars from the windows of that school and any other school that has it uh, because, you know, children shouldn't go to school feeling like they're in prison.
Thank you. Ms. Maria Lorenz?
Thank you. Good evening. I have given you all a packet with a letter and some supporting documentation for you to review. I want to understand what the penalty is for violation of school board policies. I'm certain that there has to be some type of consequence to not adhering to a board policy that you all created and put in place, either for your staff members or even for the superintendent who violates it herself. I would like to reference specifically policy 6171.6, which is the independent educational evaluation. It appears that the policy is not correct since school officials, like I said, especially Ms. Hugo Meyer, Superintendent of Schools, and your special counsel, have both advised me to submit documentations to individuals that are not named in your policy and keep quoting me a part of the policy that I feel does not apply to the parent. Therefore, I am asking you as a board to collectively get together, review this policy, and make those changes. You will see that there are in item 1A and 1A1 respectively of that policy, which is the middle of the page. I have also enclosed for your convenience the letter to Dr. Stephanie Petska by the United States Department of Education, Office of Special Ed and Rehabilitative Services dated September 10th, 2001. If you look at your policy and you look at that letter, you will see a lot of similarities in where this school district is violating not just state, but also federal law. So I suggest that you align your policies as a board. I will assert this policy is not being followed by personally having experienced the following. I requested for an independent evaluation on February 15, 2019, your policy states that I should have received from this school district information about where an IEE may be obtained and the criteria. I can assure you that this never happened. I was told I had to provide from my independent evaluator a current resume, state-issued license, and certifications of criminal, current criminal history. I was not advised to provide the contract, however, as per your policy states. I am supposing it's because it doesn't apply to me. Three, the above was to be submitted to the Director of Student Services, who on your website is listed as Aaron Goldblatt, not the Director of Special Services, so perhaps you want to pay special attention to that as well. Yet, when I asked Ms. Hugo Meyer that question, she sent me and directed me to send that information to Ms. Diana Pinto, and the special counsel, Mr. Flum, suggested that this was an accommodation, and I'm quoting that word. That's not an accommodation. I follow policy, I work in HR. I don't follow the gray, I follow what's written. Apparently, this board in this district is not doing that, and you're very much misaligned. In addition to that, section E of your policy states that an observation should be for one period in duration. I was persistently told it was 20 minutes. How can that be? How is it that your own staff in your own school district doesn't know your own policy? That's despicable. In addition to that, it's my strong belief that this board instituted the policy has grossly violated the rights of parents who have requested independent in the past. Ms. Hugo Meyer, today I handed you a complaint that I am sending to the state. It is a seven-page complaint with 35 pages accompanying that as supporting documentation in addition to that letter from the U.S. Department of Education. I would expect that you would sign and acknowledge that I have given you this today on May 9th at this board meeting. So please take a look at that. I will be here later to receive your acknowledgement of said complaint. It's misinformation to the public.
Ms. Lorenz, I'm sorry.
I understand, but you need to understand that you voted on that policy, Ms. Hugo.
Ms. Patricia Galante?
Good evening, Madam President. This is Hugo Meyer, members of the board. What I'm gonna speak about this evening, you all can fix in approximately, hmm, two minutes. Could you please, somebody, someday, somehow, decide on a time to start a board meeting and start it on time? I have asked you this before. My time is just as valuable as your time. And Mrs. Hugo Meyer is here from probably 6:30 in the morning, and on board meeting day, she's probably here till 12:30 at night. But perhaps if you started a board meeting on time, you might be able to get home on time. I'm not being mean, I'm not being nasty, I don't want to be mean, I don't want to be nasty, but you had parents in this audience this evening that probably had to reshuffle babysitting, dinners, homework, baths. And they sat here. This is so rude. It is beyond rude. I, yes, and you changed the time. Come on. And I just don't get it. Could somebody explain it to me? You don't have to answer now, but perhaps somebody someday could explain to me why a board meeting never starts on time. And I'd also just like to address the fact that I have looked at the budget as well, and it concerns me as an educator, as a taxpayer, that schools, I understand the state aid, this aid, that that aid, I get it. I know it all. No, I mean, I know about it, I don't know everything. But it's time to stop playing the no-tax gain game. It's time to stop that because our kids need things and we cannot take $800,000 away from a school, raise the school tax by $5, and explain that to the public. They'll understand. They won't mind. Stop the "we didn't raise your tax" game because it's hurting our children. Thank you.
Ms. Danielle Feinberg?
Uh, good evening, board. Um, I have, uh, three topics I'd like to discuss. Um, one, I became aware that a child, uh, who was a friend of my son's at school six, um, apparently they don't get kindergarten and kindergarten, they don't get recess outside. Um, the, uh, and apparently that's for kindergarten under in school six. They do have a yard that the older children can play in. However, I would think it's more important for the very youngest of the children to get the wiggles out. Um, I was told that this is just how things are done there. All the kindergarteners have recess inside their classrooms. I do not think this is appropriate. Um, I've heard other parents at other schools, I believe Batten was one of them, where children also are not getting to go outside. Next year, the law is that the children have to be able to go outside. I would hope before that law is enacted, we can serve our children by letting them have some fresh air. Um, second, I became aware at, I believe it is school six again, um, they're doing a trip to Six Flags on the, uh, for Autism Day, I believe. Um, the permission form, uh, states that they have to be there for the science portion of the state testing. Um, I believe that that is a very weird thing to tie to an educational trip. Another weird thing to tie to an educational trip for disabled students is their grades and behavior that's related to their disability. If they can be excused from the trip due to their behavior or lower academic grades, then you are absolutely excluding children. It's discriminatory. Um, and the third topic I would like to touch on is personal aides. Um, they should follow the student, they should be secure in their jobs, that way they can follow the students and give them the best care. Um, if a child needs a one-to-one or a two-to-one or a four-to-one, whatever the group ratio is, and they have, uh, gained a rapport with that person, it is extraordinarily disruptive to the child to lose that aide. And should they lose the personal, uh, should the personal aide be in fear of their job or their contract ending, are they going to be able to give all the support that the child needs? I don't think so, and I think that we should ensure that the children who need these aides can have consistent aides and keep the rapport, keep their progress going. Thank you.
Thank you. Being that there is no more, um, public participation, at this time, I close public comment portion of this meeting. At this time, the President requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of personnel matters, specifically 2019, 2020, contracts for tenured and non-tenured personnel, employee benefit plans, superintendent evaluations, and school calendar. The board will reconvene in public and may add to the agenda. Can I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to go into private.
Second. Motion has been properly moved and seconded.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathalas. Carvalho. Jeveras. Hernandez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Nara.
Yes.
Pastana.
Yes.
What is that?
Jerry's on the line. Just going on there. Okay. Let's go into private.
I hung up.